Good afternoon. Thank you for your patience. And good afternoon and welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you now in the humblest way we know how, come about his and humble hearts, looking unto you, the author and the finisher of our faith. We depend on you for wisdom, for insight, for revelation, realizing we can't govern alone. God, I thank you for the good hand of the Lord, as Nehemiah said, "That is upon us, our mayor, our council, our city," and even on today as we welcome a portion of our educators here today. We're mindful to lift up our neighboring state of Georgia, the school system and all the grieving families there. God, wrap your loving arms around them and comfort them like only you can, and help us to conduct the business at hand today. We ask it all in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray, and all that agrees, say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on September the 3rd.
So move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of August 30th through September 5th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. I see Mayor Ford has some this morning.
Thank you, Mr. President. And many y'all may know somebody that's been a dear friend to all of us, Mr. George White. So we're going to give him a proclamation today, and to receive this is going to be his stepson, the one and only Steve Partridge, who's an employee of the City of Gadsden.
Wonderful.
If he becomes president. I'm going to go ahead and start reading this. Whereas George White has given his time and provided dedicated service to the City of Gadsden as a volunteer over the course of many years, and whereas George, a resident of Turntine Avenue, offered his expertise and support to the idea of preserving historic neighborhoods in the City of Gadsden, he was instrumental in the establishment of the city's three historic residential districts through performing the necessary legal work and constructing needed documents at no charge, as well as continuing to provide expert advice and interpretation in the years that followed. And whereas George White was a charter member of the Historic Preservation Commission, serving for seven years from 1990 to 1997, he was also one of the original members of the Turntine Architecture Review Board and served for eight years, 1993 to 2021. And whereas, in addition to his work historic neighborhoods, George also gave dedicated service to the Forest Cemetery, serving for 10 years on the board from 2010 to 2020, and eight years on the foundation from 2012 to 2020. And whereas, George White has often gone above and beyond the call of duty, such as climbing up to the roof of the Ruth R. Cross Memorial Chapel at Forest Cemetery to gain personal insight into his slate roof system in order to ensure that a qualified firm was secured to perform needed roof repairs, as well as crafting windows and other items to maintain the historical accuracy of other structures in the cemetery and elsewhere. And now therefore, I correct forward, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, hereby join with the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, as George White Day. Representative, I mean, Representative Councilman. Yeah, go ahead.
Steve and I did not climb on the roof. We would not be standing.
Yeah, me neither.
We would fall through.
I'd like to add two cents still. He's my neighbor. Okay, George, I've lived on Turntine for 15 years, and George has been my neighbor, and it's been a wonderful experience from, like, all of these things that everybody has said about George, but I'll share one with mine. Outside of him helping me re-repair one of the large columns on the front of my home with boat fiberglass putty that he somehow knew that that's what we needed to use, he always had a solution for historic preservation. But the one thing that nobody talked about here that I love the most about George is his neighborhood crime watch habits. Anybody who's lived in the historic district downtown any time over the last 15 years, you have seen a gentleman at all hours of the night, it may be 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, riding around on a tricycle-bicycle, pedaling with a big orange flag floating on the back of it, where he's sitting down in one of these, you know, motorized things. And George had no problem pulling straight into your driveway and walking straight into your backyard with a million candle-power light at 2:00 in the morning just to make sure everything was okay in the neighborhood. So in addition to all the other great stuff he did, what a great attorney he was and what a great resource he's been for the historic district, he was also a heck of a crime-watch guy. So I appreciate George and wish him all the best, and I'm happy to have had the opportunity to know him, and he's a good neighbor, and I count myself thankful for that.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. And we have another proclamation. Who I was good friends with, with her son, and can you believe we're standing up here now, Ms. Little? And your son's now president of the bank. So Gates is her son and a very good friend of mine. But this is a proclamation from the City of Gadsden. Whereas, Ms. Susan Little, a resident of Turntine Avenue, had a dream of preserving historic neighborhoods in the City of Gadsden. And whereas, Susan began by researching the steps necessary to establish residential historic districts, in which including submitted a historical survey on each house in the proposed district detailing its history and architectural style. And whereas, Susan Little invested the hundreds of hours of work in researching deeds, tax records, old telephone books, and city directories to compile the information and materials that were necessary, as well as working to gain the support of the individual property owners in the City of Gadsden to pursue the designation. And whereas, as chairman of the survey committee, Susan's diligence and attention to detail regarding the 53 houses located in the proposed district, even purchasing a book on architectural styles to ensure correctness resulted in the Alabama Historical Commission's approval of her superb work in designation of the Turntine Historic District, which placed on the Alabama Register of Landmarks and Heritage and National Register of Historic Places. And whereas, Susan was instrumental in the formation of the Gadsden Historic Preservation Commission, which was established on September 11th, 1990, and served as preservation officer and chairman of the District Preservation Committee. She also served as the first president of the Turntine Owners Association, Incorporated, which was created on January 7th, 1991. And whereas, as chair of the Column Committee, Susan oversaw the erection of brick columns at each end of the Turntine Avenue Historic District, she also obtained National Register plaques for the columns and was responsible for the creation of individual plaques for each house, which were purchased by the individual property owners. And whereas, Susan Little was an original member of the Turntine Avenue Architecture Review Board established on May 20th, 1993, and continued serving until recently. Whereas, Susan again invested hundreds of hours conducting the required survey and most of the other work involving 24 houses on Argyle Circle and 65 houses on Harrelson Avenue, resulting in the creation and designation of the city's two other residential historic districts. Now therefore, I correct forward, Mayor of Gadsden, hereby join with Gadsden City Council in proclaiming Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, also as Susan Little Day. Thank you.
We couldn't have done any of this without the city. The national and the state were wonderful, but if the city hadn't declared its own ordinance, it wouldn't have benefited. So thank you, thank you, Jason, for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Thank you, Ms. Little, and thank you, Steve Partridge, for representing George White. Thank you very much. Two hard-working folks that have made our city a better place. So thank y'all. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8. It's unfinished business. 8A is an ordinance rezoning property located at 119 Erby Boulevard from an R1-1 family residence district to B2 general business district. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. The applicant, Jeremy Sanders, wishes to create a lodging resort. The planning commission recommended approval. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So move.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Just looking forward to this project. I see the Sanders back.
Microphone.
Just looking forward to this project. I see the Sanders back there. I'm looking forward to what this is going to look like at the end. It's taking a piece of property that they've had their families own for a long time, but it's been kind of there, kind of dead, so now they're going to revamp that area and bring some much-needed lodging to that area, to Knocklough Falls. Thank y'all.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is an ordinance. It's rezoning property located at 715 Rayleigh Street from R1-1 family residence district to B2 general business district. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The applicant, Vista Holdings, would like to prepare the property for future use. The planning commission recommended denial. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. Help us out here, Iva. So we've got an ordinance, and the planning commission has recommended to deny the ordinance.
We still need a vote on it.
Yeah, right.
Yes, sir. If you wish to not grant the zoning, you would vote no on the ordinance. So someone might be willing to make a motion to consider the ordinance and then go from there.
Make a motion to consider the ordinance rezoning 715 Rayleigh Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right.
Maybe do a roll call vote.
Absolutely.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All right.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
No.
Councilman Smith.
No.
Councilman Avery.
No.
Councilman Back.
No.
Councilwoman Wilson.
No.
Councilwoman Minatra.
No.
And Councilman Robinson.
No.
The ordinance fails to carry, therefore, the zoning is not approved.
All right, thank you for that help. All right, Agenda Item 9. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license to D&amp;D Beverages LLC located at 401BNC, Meagan Boulevard in District 3, has applied for a lounge retail liquor Class II license, which is a package store. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? All right, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Is this District 3?
It is. It's in District 3.
Oh. I'm sorry.
For the package store.
I wasn't here last week, I'm sorry. I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Agenda Item 10. Our final public hearing is an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2025 budgets. This ordinance approves the following budgets. General Fund, $74,402,513. Special Revenue Funds, $10,363,205. Debt Service Funds, $6,9,965. Enterprise and Internal Service Funds, $16,301,966. Capital Projects Fund, $10,741,168. Capital Projects II, $9,438,750. This ordinance also adopts the employee pay scale. Copies of the budget are available in the finance and city clerk offices. Is there anyone who would like to speak in regard to the budget? I see Mayor Ford has approached the microphone.
So, Mr. President, members of the council, this is a, the slide docs and the PowerPoint of the budget. We, of course, somebody in our office has met with each council person prior to this proposal, but we'll go through this. If you have any questions, I have Brandon, who's our finance director, and Brett, who is also very involved in the budget, especially the pay scale. We met with, and Brandon will elaborate on this, with each department head and went over their budget with them. The way the process works, they, they give us their wants, then we whittle it down to their needs. But we had a good partnership with all the department heads, and they understand where we are in the budget. And there's a lot of numbers in the beginning when you see the final, I think it's final, one of the slide docs decks that are in there that shows a lot of different percentages is because we did away with some departments and we consolidated some of the departments, and I'll let Brandon kind of elaborate on that. But let's go to the next slide, please. So I believe in naming our budgets. Last year, we had our name of our budget. This year, his name is GROW, Generating Resources, Optimizing Workforce, because we have generated the GROW Gadsden Plan, and it's the people's plan. It's not our plan. So we thought this was fitting for this year's GROW budget. Next slide, please. So revenues, this is encouraging, and I think this is a lot due to all of our work in the room, but the revenue are up, is up from FY '24 at 9%. It could be as high as 10%, but we're trying to be very conservative on the budget, and we're at 9%. They all made, all the categories are up, sales tax, OLF, Avalor, and business license, recreation services. So we were very impressed with that. Parks and Rec had a huge increase this year with all the activities that they're having, the concerts, the parking of the Gadsden State Complex back there. So had a lot of revenue increases this year in the budget. Next, please. So this is an important thing. This is, once a month, Brandon and I sit down together and we go over the documents on usually by the 5th of the following month for the previous month. And what we do, we look at each department, and we look at city council, we look at mayor's office, and we look at public works, we look at finance committee. And it'll show, they should be at this bar graph. I'm a visual person, and so it shows, is the next graph? There it is, right there. So if you'll look at the red, taking engineering, for example, I can't see that far. But engineer, let's, let's pick on Iva. City Clerk, okay? Can we point to?
Yeah, you got it.
City Clerk. It shows in the red what she has spent, but in the yellow bar graph, it shows, what is that? That shows what's encumbered. I can't read that far. So it shows what's encumbered. The green line going vertical north to south is where every department should be. So the red is what's important to us. It shows what has been spent. So what's left over come October 1, if they haven't spent it or encumbered it, which we put a spending freeze on as of August the 10th, so we can kind of get our numbers ready for the next fiscal year, all that additional monies is dumped into the undesignated fund, just so you'll know. So once again, our undesignated fund will grow again, okay? Any questions on that graph? Okay, next. This, Brandon, I'll let you speak to this.
Okay. This is basically a summary, and you guys have seen the budget document, but this is basically your budget document in one page. So I like this, this slide here because it shows you our major categories, and it shows you the increases and decreases. Now, we met with each council member to describe some of these items on here and why they're up and down, just without knowing the backstory to some of these, which we all discussed, you know, we discussed with you guys. It may look a little skewed, but there's reasoning behind each of these increases and decreases on here. But it just shows your total expenditures by category, total revenues by category, or I'm sorry, total revenues and your unassigned fund balance that you're pulling from in comparison to '24. So again, we've talked these over with council. Mayor Ford want to go into details on these, but, you know, we're adding some items you'll see in slides later. Why is capital projects up? Well, we're adding a paving crew, you know, and then why is our personnel, we're able to get these raises, but it's only up a certain amount? Well, we're able to fund that from our 510 fund that we still have a balance in, our benefits fund. So again, you're able to do some things like add a paving crew here, give employee raises, but then able to fund it, some of that out of our 510 fund, so we're not touching our general fund, so it doesn't hit your numbers here in the general fund quite so hard. So again, this is your budget at a glance with all the major categories, expenditures and revenues. And another thing that I want to point out with these increases in revenues, an important statistic that we usually look at is percentage of personnel cost to your total budget, and we've been able to actually bring that number down a little bit with these budgets. Of course, our revenues are up, business license, certain things. So again, if there's any questions on that, we can address them, but I think every council member has seen this summary within their budget document, so.
So I will address the outside agency appropriations as we stated in our meetings. All Gadsden, anything that had to do with Gadsden or something that Gadsden had their fingers in, their tentacles in, we included that in outside agencies. If it was a 501(c)(3) or any other thing than a 501(c)(3), we're using CDBG funds, which is a process to qualify for those funds. You have to fill out the paperwork, you have to prove your documentation, and there are funds available on CDBG. We get about $980,000 from CDBG funds from the federal government. They cut us $100,000 this year, and why, I don't know. That's just kind of what they do. But it could go up a little bit next year, it could go down a little bit. But that's what, where we're encouraging any 501(c)(3) to apply for those funds. We have to give out so much of those funds to these 501(c)(3)'s, but they have to do their due diligence and fill out the paperwork. It's not complicated, and if it is, if they do have a hard time filling out their paperwork, Ruth also holds two seminars a year where she helps them fill out their paperwork to qualify for these funds. So we want to give them the money if it's available for them to get received. And the unassigned balance, I'll mention that. So if y'all, if you've been watching city council about every other month, we have come to the council and asked for monies in the unassigned balance and for public works, mainly on equipment and some legal fees and et cetera. When we met with the auditor, he said, instead of meeting, instead of going to the council every other month, you need to take the overage of what you don't want in the unassigned balance and move it into the general fund. And that's what we did there. The, it's been the temperature of the council to maintain 20 million in the unassigned balance, and by moving that money over there, the 20 million will still remain in the unassigned balance. Now, keep in mind, starting October 1, that money will continue to increase above 20 million. So hopefully, every year, we'll be able to transfer whatever above 20 million into the general fund to help pay for items that we found necessary. Okay, next slide, please. This is encouraging. This has nothing to do with this administration, but just to let the public know, we paid off two debt services. We paid off 2012B, which was the Gadsden Public Library in Knocklough Falls. We paid off 2014D, Riverfront Commercial Development. And this fiscal year, we'll pay off 2017AGOW venue, East Gadsden Community Center, landfill expansion, and et cetera, had some other small items in there. The 20, the numbers dictate what year that bond was done. The B, D, and A, I'm not sure what that represents. Brandon, do you know?
I think it'd be the issue for the city. So if you, if you had a 2017A, and then you issued another bond, it would be 2017B.
Okay. I thought you were going to say it was the alphabet. All right. All right, next slide.
That is, that is hard to see.
Okay, this is hard to see, but you should have this and receive this. This is important. This is the bonds that we have in play right now. If you'll see, in 2025, it shows where we pay off that bond, and at the bottom, it shows our total bond payments. So this year, out of the 340 fund, does that say 5. what, Jennifer? 5.8 million dollars is already committed out of our, out of our budget to pay for those bonds. The next year, Brett, what does it say? 4.9, and then it goes back up to, I think, 5.2, and then keep going. 5. what?
5.2.
5.2 again, and then what?
5.2.
5.2, 3.3, 2.3, and it goes on down to the FY 2033. If you'll notice behind, right below that, Gadsden City Schools, the City of Gadsden pays $1.8 million approximately a year to this bond that had to do with the school system. So the lion's share of our bond payment, the number above, is the 1.8 million. Now, the school system pays us $900,000 a year of that 1.8 million. The reason they pay us is back when this bond was established, schools, systems could not participate in the bond program. Now they can. So I've been in conversation with Mr. Blackwell. If rates were lower again, like they were during COVID, he would refinance the bond himself and move the money over there. We would still oblige our commitment of paying that amount above $900,000, but they would retain some savings, and we hope the bond rates continue to go down, which we think they will after discussing with their bonds. The graph below shows the bonds and what they were used for, which is important, too. Any questions on that slide? Okay, next. Okay, personnel. This is important for all of us. All employees received a minimum increase of 2% with a satisfactory evaluation. When I came on, we started evaluating every employee in the City of Gadsden, should have gotten an evaluation similar to the military. We went all downhill, and we started evaluating all our employees. So we would evaluate, I evaluate my staff, our staff evaluates the director heads, the director heads evaluates the supervisors, supervisors evaluate the employees. Then we have a checks and balances, too, where if somebody had a grudge on one employee, there's always a backup situation in HR where we all evaluate every evaluation, and it sounds mundane, but it actually works, and it's been very good to us. So part-time, something we're proud of, we're raising all minimum pay to $11 an hour. That's part-time, seasonal, and non-part-time. It's basically just part-time. Cost of raises, raises have been absorbed by the unspent funds in the workers' comp balance. So there was a large worker comp balance. We, we are self-insured in our workers' comp, but Stacy does an excellent job, but we also have an umbrella policy where anything above $750,000 is covered by our insurance policy of workers' comp. So there is no need to build a huge bank in the workers' comp when we don't need the money, so we're able to transfer that money into the general fund and put that towards the raises, and we absorb the, by the unspent funds. Next page. So the big deal of the budget, there's a lot of big deals in the budget, but one thing that we're very proud of is that we're having our own paving crew. The cost of asphalt and all the materials have increased, skyrocketed. We will still be buying our raw materials from, you know, potentially Vulcan or whoever wins the bid, but we will be saving the people a lot of money. We'll have our own paving crew, our own city-owned equipment, and it's a $3 million one-time expense for all the equipment. So what does that mean? It seems like the number one thing in the community and the people, especially in the GROW plan, the way won't roads paved, where it's like pulling teeth, having to do a bid, and having to wait on the roads to be paved. So this is exciting to me that we're going to be able to, we can pave roads when we need to. In the winter, when it's below a certain temperature, you can't pave roads, but what we can be doing during that time is milling the roads and getting them ready for the spring so we can go out and lay asphalt. We're looking at tar and gravel options on roads that are not paved at all. There's a lot of, I'll just be honest with you, a lot of roads that are disappointing to me when I took office, and it's no pun against the previous administrations, just paving is very expensive. You could spend the whole budget for the next 10 years just on paving and not pave enough roads. So we did the thing with Heath, where you go around with a camera, we videoed each road, we sent it off to an independent person, they, they rated the roads, A, B, and C, red, yellow, green, and the red roads are the ones that are going to be prioritized. So the point of that was, was to try to take politics out of paving, and let's pave the worst roads first. The crew will consist of city employees, $830,000 total personnel cost, 12 full-time crew with benefits, and hopefully, when we address the HR, the handbook, this crew will be a different type of crew. They will not be receiving breaks in the morning and the afternoon and et cetera. They will be working and paving roads. Next slide. There it is again. So facade and residential incentives. We, we delayed that. The money will be in the budget, but once we figure out the legalities of it, the facade improvements in Crew Broad Street, East Broad, Tuscaloosa Avenue, and Wall Street, so there will be a certain grant amount. This is something that Mr. President and Councilman Wilson, y'all did before that we liked. We put this back in the budget. So if you own a piece of property on the main street of those areas and you qualify to redo those facades, you will receive a grant to do that. Next slide. Okay, garbage fund. This is important. So with the garbage funds, and we're still the lowest in the county as far as in our[1766.01] garbage fund, our bill. So it generated enough money where every year, the budget was subsidizing, prior to us coming on, $500,000 in making up for the loss. So we have covered the loss, and now, according to our auditor, which we're going to do, we can buy trucks for public works out of the garbage fund, which is the, what's that number?
430.
430. The 430 fund, which is important. So why is that important? It's because now, we're on a system by y'all allowing us to use the undesigned funds to buy garbage trucks, loader trucks, garbage trucks, loader trucks, et cetera. Now, every year, on a rotation basis, where we'll be able to buy a garbage truck, loader truck, and another piece of equipment out of the garbage fund, and it doesn't take from the capital projects fund. So that's kudos to all of us, and kudos to y'all for allowing us to do that. So we're on a rotation, Councilwoman Minotra, where every five years, we will buy, every year, we'll buy one, but the oldest vehicle we'll have in three years will be five years old. So it's worked out, and it is a good system, and we're happy to be able to do this. Next. Oh, the video equipment. Okay. The third eye equipment is important for the public works. They came to us with this. What this allows us to do is when somebody calls in and says, you didn't pick up my garbage can. Well, we have a third eye, basically a Jeep, a video, I don't know how you explain it, a third eye, that looks down. We can zone in and type in that address. It'll let us know if you had your can on the road or if you have service. If a can is stolen, if a can is taken, if a can is in need of repair, it'll video everything that driver does. And it also allows us to keep up with the driver to make sure they're doing their job. So it's just technology in play with AI again, and it's helping us be able to, it's a, it's a good investment for our equipment, for all the trucks. Next.
I got a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Personal question.
It will not video you.
So, well, I'm glad you, to the point. So like, when they come through my neighborhood, they pick up the trash down one side of the street, and then they circle around to a couple of other streets, and then they come back and pick up the other side of my street. Well, from time to time, if I've got too much garbage, I may put my full garbage can on the other side of the street and let them pass by and pick it up, and then fill it back up and put it on my side of the street before they get back around 30 minutes later. Y'all gonna catch me doing that with this third eye thing?
Probably not. If you're in a paying, is on this where you're placing the trash can as a payment, that you'd be more.
So y'all aren't going to be proactively looking for people sneaking extra garbage pickups in?
Well, what's going to happen is wherever you're placing it, they're going to get charged for two garbage cans, though.
So we would encourage that, so it ends up in not our dump.
In my defense, I actually pay for two garbage cans already.
You pay for two?
Yeah. I got the pink one and then the regular one.
So you take the pink one across the street?
Yeah. Mix them up a little bit.
Well, if he pays for two, can't you just put them side by side?
Yeah. That's a good point. Sometimes, hey!
So if you pay for two garbage cans, you can put them side by side on your curb. Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
I had the pink trash can, so when I moved, I brought my pink trash can with me to the new house, and then to, that house had a.
Black can.
And I took it back to the other house. So then, when I canceled my service at the other house, y'all of them get that trash can and bring it back.
That's correct, yeah.
And Mayor, I think it's important, just so we don't look over this, is that, you know, this is a separate fund. I know the council's familiar with this, but allowing you to do these things out of this fund just saves you money in your general fund and allows you to put more money into other departments, police, fire, public work, these others. So I just want to just reiterate that. I know that with, if you're involved with this budget and you understand, and especially for the people out in the audience, you have allowed your general fund to be able to do other things for your other departments because this is a separate fund.
Is, is the garbage fund historically not been used to offset the, the collections?
So the garbage fund, every year prior to us taking over, has been subsidized by the general fund, 500,000, which I.
Well, that's, that's what it was. I was, we were actually having to pump money into the garbage fund because of the uncollected.
Hence the increase in the garbage fee.
Right. But now that we've got that, not only have we eliminated the need to transfer funds from the general fund.
To purchase new equipment in that fund.
We can actually use that fund to purchase assets.
To be able to do these things. And our auditor's also recommended, as far as writing off these old balances, they've got a kind of a plan in place or a recommendation for us in place.
The bad debt.
The bad debt, correct. We're going to, we're going to talk about that next year.
So we've actually had residents call continuously thanking us for the new garbage trucks because of the, the noise and not waking them up and et cetera.
And, and to your question, Tina, if you would have mentioned that maybe.
So don't, don't forget the Greater Gadsen Housing Authority contract helped us also with that deficit that we had in that budget.
Yeah.
That, that was a tremendous help.
Okay.
Yeah, those new garbage trucks are super quiet. Every time I'm up in District 7 where they run all the time, I can always surprise.
We put the new ones in five, by the way. Capital project funds, we mentioned earlier, a few weeks ago, the $3 million night golf. I won't elaborate on that anymore. I think that's been hit pretty hard. 1.5 million on phase five, that will be the last phase of Gaston Sports Park Signature Baseball Field. That is, if it's right across the street from the Miracle Field or, I'm not sure what was, Champions Field. So that'll, that'll be, that area will be a signature baseball field. The reason that field's important, it puts us at eight fields, including Gaston State's, that puts us in a whole other level. So Matt, when we hired him as Parks and Rec, it puts us qualifying for huge tournaments. So we will still, we'll be in the same category as the, as the big cities, of being able to bid on those tournaments. We also have a million dollars in new equipment. Usually, we have 2 million, so we've lowered that to a million because we're paying a million out of the 3430 fund. So that includes everything from baiters, the gators, to weed eaters, to lawnmowers, to police cars, to fire, everything you can think of. Okay, next. Is that it? All right, I'll turn it over to Brandon.
Sure. So I'll, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but, you know, I just wanted to mention, you know, as far as going through this process, for me, it's a, it's a lengthy process. I think you guys know that last year was a special year because it was my first year doing this. Pretty hectic, pretty crazy. It still came out well, but we learned a lot of things. And this budget, if I can just highlight something, it's just collaboration and teamwork. So I just want to mention, as far as the department heads, the liaisons, the mayor himself, you know, everybody that was involved in this that put it together, it's not just one person's budget, it's a citywide budget. Everybody is involved in this budget, and I think it, I think it's great. I think we learned a lot of things that first year and put them in place this year, and I'm, I'm pretty proud of it. I put a lot of my time into it, so I'm pretty proud of it, so.
Anybody have any questions in regards to the budget?
Mr. President, I just have one, and Brandon, I don't know if this is you or Mayor or, actually, John Moore would probably be a great person to address this. I noticed that there was some pretty significant restructuring in the Parks and Rec Department, and, and there was a lot of lump sums kind of moved around into different accounts. Can you, and I know why, but could you go in just for transparency, exactly some of the components of how we restructured our Parks and Rec Department, why we now see funds in the Gaston Sports Park account and the venue account, I think went up considerably.
Well, I think one thing's important to say, and I'm not going to speak over John, but I will say this, we monitor all those moves, and, and John took those departments and worked with them, and overall was able to stay within operating expenses or actually decrease those.
Oh, no doubt about it.
Yeah, we were monitoring that, saying, well, we're creating a new department over here for Couso Landing, and that's up this much, but it decreased this. So I was, you know, we were careful to monitor that. Now, as far as going into the specifics, you know.
Yeah, I was really not talking about a fiscal or a financial perspective, just more of a strategic, a strategic. So now we have a, a new department that I think we started in last year's budget is the AMP. That was a whole new division. And then this year, we're starting a new category or new department for Couso Landing. That'll have its own standalone budget. Now, the Gaston Sports Park has its standalone budget, and the venue is taking on, I guess, responsibility for some other things as far as budgetary.
So like, what Koo just agreed, how Couso Landing is now, so Couso Landing used to get kind of hidden into a budget.
Right.
And you never really knew if it was making money, was it losing money?
Sure.
So with, with Couso Landing now, we're actually able to monitor that and make sure that whenever we're dipping that, sales, we're kind of looking at them a little closer.
Yeah.
So we put Couso Landing under Christina from the Falls. She had worked it before and realized they hadn't adjusted their prices pre-COVID.
Yeah.
So we were losing money.
Yeah.
And so we went down there, and we're not in the business of making money, we're in the business of breaking even. So now it's actually making 2% possibly, so.
Yeah.
And we also started alcohol sales down there, got ABC Liquor Auctions, and then also we're going to be serving gas, hopefully, soon as our tank comes in.
Yeah.
And I, I want to mention one point, too, before this administration came in. I'll give you a great example, not to, again, knock previous administration or folks that were doing this, but when you looked at this, you had a, and Mayor laughs at me because I remember all these, these department numbers, but 6,500 was Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
But you had 6,700 was Nacogdole Falls. Well, 6,700 did not have any personnel cost under it. That makes no sense. Now, all those employees were documented under 6,500 as Parks and Rec, but as, as, I know a term Brett was using, like cost centers or, or break, it's just a better, we've learned these things, and, and getting a better capture of revenues offsetting expenses in a specific department. Now, we could dig through, I'll give that example, in Parks and Rec and say, well, which one of these are at the Falls? It just wasn't set up that way, and I'm glad that we did that because we, we separated or pulled those employees out, have them coded under here. So now, we pull a report and say, this is Falls, this is their personnel expense, separate from just Parks and Recreation. So that's, that's a great example of just of giving these things.
I love it. And I mean, personally, as a business owner, the more detail on a, on a P and L and a balance sheet, the better, the better decisions you can make. You know, data is king. And it doesn't surprise me that Nacogdole Falls was trying to hide their labor costs, District 7 up there.
That was before my time, first of all. So like now, when that campground does open this spring.
Microphone.
Thank you, Michael.
I'm so sorry. When, when this camp, when the campground does open this spring, that's a question I was wanting to have, so we'll know exactly what that campground is making over a year's time, if, you know.
So we did not include, we didn't include those numbers in the budget.
Right.
So that'll just be money going in the undesigned fund.
Is that under, is that going to be under Nacogdole Falls?
Under Nacogdole Falls.
Nacogdole Falls campground?
No, under Nacogdole Falls.
Nacogdole Falls. So that'll be in the same as Christmas at the Falls and entries and the golf.
And we added that entry when you noticed the transfer of the money. That money was also for the Christmas lights money, paying back the 320 fund for what we all said we would do.
Okay.
But the software that we'll utilize for reservations and booking at the campground will be able to accurately track, I think, the, I think that's Chris's point, is will we finally be able to tell whether an individual component of Nacogdole Falls is profitable?
Oh, yes. We could, we could have done that before.
You could have. I know we used to, I mean, we were campers, we camped there, and you would get your, you know, you'd run your credit card, you'd stay there for three days, but when it came back, it just said city of Gaston, $115, you know? So I didn't know how that, I always wondered even before I was elected official, like, how do they know where that money is coming from and going?
And I don't, again, not to bore you guys, but, but to your point specifically, and I'll look at Mr. Scott, he likes to wear a chart of accounts, and that's super important. We're going to this new system, so looking at your chart of accounts, you have general fund revenues, but I'll say, I can go ahead and tell you it's 342 is a segment, that's Parks and Rec. But you go to this next segment, it may be 10, that may be the Falls. It may be 12 is the campground. So this allows us, and we're setting it up, and we've been working on this data going on our new system, so generating information, giving, giving you guys exactly what you're talking about will be, will be easier.
Can you see what the gift shop does and what the butt, butt golf does to that point?
Correct. If, if you ever look in our accounting system, I don't know if there's any reports, so it's almost like looking at a board of education, if you're familiar with that, they use the same chart of accounts. It's this long, but each one of those segments allows us to, to mine down and get to that data. So, yes.
Yes, just subcategories.
But to your point, yes, there's a way that you could say, can you show me the revenues for this? And absolutely can.
Any other?
I had a question on employee costs. You brought it up at the beginning of the percentage. Do you know what the employee costs?
And I thought that might come, I, I had it on there, but I do not know off the top, but I can, I can get you. I just saw that number, and I know part of that is because of our total budget going up, but I understand as well, but I keep that off to the side, and I don't know exactly what that percentage is. But I will tell you this, before this administration come in, come in, we were bumping above 70% total administration. I mean, we're talking 71, 72% in some cases, and that's just, it prob, I would, I would imagine it's down, it's definitely down in the 60s now.
That's where I thought it was headed, so I didn't know if you had that number.
And that's a, yeah, as you can say, obviously, that's, that's just a, that's a huge number.
And if you will talk a little bit about Tyler, you had mentioned, we've talked about some electronics and things like that. We were not very far along with that until y'all came along. Now, we're getting more components of the Tyler system, which is the city's, what do you call that, the, the operating system?
Our financial software, yes, sir. And it's interesting you say that. We have a representative from our consulting firm that we hired, as well as a representative from Tyler on site today. And we have been on, I was on a call with them this morning before I came down here. We are, I'll go and tell you, we're bumping out the go-live date till, for a May 1st, but that is to allow us to get everything in that we need. And I know this has been a long process. They have told us that, I mean, there have been municipalities that have gone through this and get to this point and, and just have to go back. I mean, we didn't want that. We wanted a successful implementation versus an arbitrary go-live date, is the way the consultant put it, and I really like that. I feel better about that than I felt the whole time, especially having staff on to help me with this. So we're looking at a May go-live date for this thing, and it should be ready to, to rock and roll. The chart of accounts, everything we put into it should be ready to go, and, and as I stated earlier, get you guys the information so much quicker and more efficiently that you need to make decisions.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's good to hear. That's a monumental undertaking. That's a, that's a big, big task.
At the risk of getting run out of town, I didn't bother to look, but are we getting a raise? I mean, seriously, is the council getting, are we getting on this 2% bump?
The mayor and the council's pay is predicated upon, the mayor's pay, which is predicated upon making 3% higher than the highest paid employee, so that employee will get a 2% raise, hence the mayor will get a 2% raise.
AIL.com, if you need it, just Google it.
I've already seen it.
It does. That was done in the prior council before we came on.
Yeah, I remember that.
It's all tied into, to the pay, so this is an automatic, yes, Mayor Ford, I did see that article, so congratulations.
Thank you. Hey, it is what it is.
It is. But any questions, anybody else? This is a public hearing on a $74 million taxpayers' budget. This is, we call it the city of Gaston, but this is the taxpayers' money. All right. Well, this, seeing none, this ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Thank you, Brandon.
Yes, sir.
And all others. Thank you, Mayor Ford. All right. Well, we will move on to item 11. It's a resolution adopting human resources policies and procedures handbook. This is to adopt one handbook to serve as the comprehensive document detailing major policies and procedures governing management of all city personnel, and to repeal all previous employee handbooks that were adopted by resolution numbers R-416-04, R-417-04, R-423-04, R-444-04, and R-463-04. The 04 at the end of all those denotes the year 2004, which was the last time the handbook was updated. And for all of you that will know, that's 20 years ago. And so at this point, we do have a, a minor addition. There have been slight changes to Exhibit A, which is in our folder. The chair will entertain a motion to substitute Exhibit A. There's been some minor changes in Exhibit A. Ima, do we need to have Nick tell us what those changes are? Or have we already seen them? And, and that's what we have.
You have them in front of you. It would certainly be in line to ask him to explain if you, if the council desires to do that.
Does anybody have any questions? Or do you have any desire to, to know what those minor changes are to the handbook?
So I think he can make it real quick, Mr. President.
Sure.
It's about police and fire.
Okay. Yeah, if you'll start.
Yes. The, what you have before you is some minor modifications that we did after meeting with police and fire, just to clear up. There were some concerns that we had taken away some of the policies, like the Fireman's Cancer Policy, which we had not. We just didn't include that in the benefit summary. So there's some things we just added to it. We highlighted all that in yellow for you. Also, there were some clarifications that was needed to be cleared up. And so there, most of those are in Chapter 7. So that's really all that we've done. But once again, we're combining five handbooks into one. We're, we're, this has been a lot of work been put into this over a year. And we're looking forward to the council. And once again, there has been a concession. The mayor agreed, let me point that out. There was just being allowed one week cell, to cell vacation. The mayor allowed for two weeks to be so, perhaps preventing some overtime, which would really assist in the budget. So there has, we have met with both sides of the labor and made some concessions that the mayor agreed to. And we're just looking forward to know, just happy that this is finally coming to fruition on this handbook.
Are there any questions from the council about those changes?
Mr. President, I want to thank Nick.
Yes.
Big time. And Tina and Brett, they redid job descriptions. But Nick, Nick says, of all my years, it's the hardest thing I've ever done. So we want to thank Nick and HR, his whole department.
Well, thank you. Appreciate y'all. Thank you very much. All right. So the chair will entertain a motion to substitute Exhibit A. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor for the substitution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for Exhibit A to be substituted.
All right. So now the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I apologize, Mr. President. Just to clarify, y'all may have just said this and I missed it. But we're considering both of these documents together as Exhibit A.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. That's the only question I have. Okay. Any others? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Now, the next two items, 12 and 13, are related to each other. I'm going to read both of them. Then I'm going to have a statement after. Item 12 is a resolution establishing a facade improvement sign grant program. This is to provide an economic incentive to renovate store facades in historically commercial districts as identified by the Grow Gadsden Master Plan. The plan will be subject to availability of funds. And then item 13, or Agenda Item 13, is a resolution amending residential development assistance policy. This is to adjust the maximum rebate amounts per unit for residential conversion, adaptive reuse developments, and existing apartment buildings to account for inflation. The legal department has asked that we table this today. And I'm going to call on City Attorney Lee Roberts to give us a description of that request.
Yes. I, I'd ask the council to table this for at least a period of one week. Historically, these, these programs have been funded by federal funds through CBD, or CDBG funds. And, and the restrictions on use of those funds are quite cumbersome. The current administration is seeking to utilize, you know, from, from, utilize different funds to fund these programs. And there's, there's a way to do it. And I think we're going to have to probably create a, a method through the Constitutional Section 772, which we have historically used for commercial development. So I just need to wirework and rewrite how we're going to fund these programs. And probably, so I'm asking for a week to do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Is there any questions in regard to that? If not, we need a motion to table for one week.
Motion to table.
Right.
Second.
Second. Right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table both resolutions for one week, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table both resolutions for one week.
Agenda Item 14 is a resolution granting easement to Alabama Power Company. This is to serve the new EV charging stations approved for installation in the rear parking area of the Cultural Arts Center. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item 15 on our agenda is new business. And we have quite a few this morning. Councilman Wilson is going to do the honors.
Yes, sir.
And bring them to our.
Okay. First of all, Mr. President, I have some documents that pertain to our relationship with Gadsden State Community College and our partnership with them on the sports park over there. So several, several different things here. The first is Item 713, which is a resolution authorizing a facility use agreement with Gadsden State Community College for the security building. They've graciously agreed to allow us to use what I think is the old Fisheries Lab as what will become the security building for the entire sports park area. As that project continues to grow and get bigger and bigger, the need for a full-time security presence over there has already shown itself. We've had some graffiti and vandalism instances over there. So anyway, this document will, will codify that relationship with Gadsden State over the security building. So if there's no objections, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. The next one is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the property lease agreement with Gadsden State. I think this is primarily driven by the, just a, an update to the, the lease agreement that defines some new projects. They're building their baseball field and softball field. We're building a new baseball field out there. And, and so this is, again, really an administrative document that refines and amends the, the property lease agreement with Gadsden State. So if there's no objections, I would like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
The final one concerning, I'm sorry, move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. The final one concerning our, our partnership with Gadsden State is a, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Gadsden State concerning some additional projects that we're going to pursue together over there. The total cost of these projects is $1.1 million. This includes $200,000 in street lighting that the City of Gadsden will be responsible for. Then we'll have a new parking lot up on the top side by the old driving course. And then lighting in that parking lot. And then a pedestrian bridge that will lead from that parking lot over to the brand-new baseball field for Gadsden State. So all in, the city will be responsible for $550,000 or, or 50% of that. So this is a memorandum of, of understanding that defines those commitments by both parties. So if there's no objection, I'd ask for immediate consideration of this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay. Our, move to adopt, please.
Second.
Yeah. Sorry. Anybody can move to adopt, just so y'all know. If I, if I've dropped that, y'all just swing right in there. Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Two years ago. All right. This is, the next one, Mr. President, is a resolution routed from the, the legal department, authorizing engagement to represent with Ford, Howard, and Cornette PC. There's some ongoing or pending litigation concerning an insurance matter. And the, this, the legal department has determined that they would need to use outside representation to keep the, the litigation moving forward quickly. And hopefully, we can get the resolution that we're looking for. So this engagement letter, it, there's no defined dollar, total dollar amount. It's $185 an hour is the billable rate. But we did have a discussion in pre-council, for those out there that weren't here. The, the most we think that this could potentially cost us with this outside legal representation would be probably somewhere around $20,000. The potential insurance claim that this is concerning is much greater than that. So it's well worth it to, to, to pursue this with a, with a claim against the insurance company. And to note that if we are successful with this litigation, the insurance company would also have to cover those legal expenses. So it wouldn't cost the city anything. And our, and our city attorney feels fairly confident that, that we have a good chance of winning this particular case. So, and, and I trust him unconditionally. When it comes to the court of law, he's never been wrong. So with that said, Mr. President, if, if there's no objections, can we suspend the rules and consider this under new business?
Second. Councilman Smith. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
That's a face saying, isn't it?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, for the record.
Yes, Mayor.
I'm not, I'm not adopted. I'm not adopted. But I'm not related either to the, to the law firm.
Oh, to the Ford law firm, okay.
Just for, and I'm not adopted either.
Okay.
Not that I know of.
You look like your daddy. You look like your father. So, yeah, you're.
All right. The next one I have, Mr. President, is from the legal department. This is a resolution authorizing agreement for housing inmates between the City of Gadsden and the City of Jacksonville. I won't, I won't wax poetic on this too much, other than to say that the mayor's office has gone to great lengths to negotiate with Edwah County on the housing of our inmates. As some of you may or may not know, the City of Gadsden, nor any other surrounding cities in Edwah County, have their own jail. They, all those inmates come to Edwah County Jail historically. And the Edwah County Jail system negotiates a rate per night, per inmate, that each city has to pay. Well, it turns out, for a long, long time, the city was not paying the same rate as anybody else. We were paying considerably more. And so we've been operating under a temporary contract that's just been in an extension mode, trying to negotiate a new contract. And unfortunately, after several attempts by the mayor, we thought we had it worked out two or three times, and it all kind of fell apart at the last second. So unfortunately, we have no choice but to, to start pursuing other options for housing our municipal inmates that the City of Gadsden arrests day to day. So this is actually, in addition to several other measures that our Police Chief Jaggers and, and the rest of the team are putting into place to address this, this resolution actually is an agreement that we will have with the City of Jacksonville, who has a, a, a brand-new state-of-the-art facility up there, to where we can transport our, our prisoners to the City of Jacksonville. And again, keep in mind, these are all, we're talking about misdemeanor crimes. You know, these are municipal-level crimes. We are not talking about felonies or federal crimes that would automatically land those individuals in the county jail anyway. So if you're talking about somebody gets a DUI, or there's a domestic violence, some sort of misdemeanor crime, those individuals would likely be transported, transported to the City of Jacksonville for incarceration temporarily until their bond date is set. And so that, that's what this agreement defines. It's actually a considerably cheaper rate per inmate per day than what we had in place with the county. And it also, obviously, again, the facility is brand-new, state-of-the-art facility. So it'll be a, a great accommodation for a very terrible time in most individuals' lives. But it's the best you can do. Because like, like my colleague, Councilman Avery, said, you know, we're all human, even if we're in jail. So I think this is good all the way around. I appreciate the mayor's office and Tina King and Mr. Entikin, our consultant, for all the hard work they've put into getting over this. So with that in mind, in the interest of moving forward, if there's no objections, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
One extension.
We have one extension. Motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I just want to thank Sheriff Todd Entikin for his effort and Tina King in helping me with this. So Todd, thank you for everything you did. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford.
Okay, Mr. President. Next one I have is a resolution recommending rejecting the sole bid for the 9th Street North Lay Street area drainage improvement project. This is one of the many projects I think that we've pursued with the American Rescue Plan funds. I believe this is one of those projects. I know we, we have action on several of them. But in this particular case, we put the project out for bid. We got one bid response, and it was roughly double the budget that the engineering department had laid out for this project. So the engineering department has recommended that we reject this sole bid and rebid the project in another format. So with that in mind, in order to keep this project moving forward, if there's no objections, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Little more upbeat here. This comes to us from Janet Terrence in the events group at the AMP over there. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the band Paris for a Halloween Rock of Horror concert and costume party to be held on October the 18th at the AMP. It is a, actually, a local band, great performers, dress up, big, it'll, it'll be a, a big-time fun Halloween party slash costume party. So y'all put that on your calendars? Well, assuming they vote on it. October the 18th. So with that in mind, and if, with the timeline, if y'all don't mind, suspend the rules and considering this under new business.
Second.
For the kids, man. It's for the kids, man. It's for the kids.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I just almost made a terrible Halloween pun. And I'm glad I did. Getting older, more mature. Okay. Last one, Mr. President. Coming from the legal department. Authorizing upgrade of current subscription for legal research and drafting with Thomson Reuters. For those that don't know, legal departments and lawyers cheat. A lot of times, they use the software programs where they just type in a couple of words, and it tells them exactly what to do and exactly what to say. And then they charge you an exorbitant amount of money. Well, our legal department here is no different. They access this, this really fancy software that lets them do research on political precedent and, or I mean, legal precedent for different cases. If they need certain references for any number of issues that might come through the legal department's office, they can utilize this third-party resource to, to do their research. So this is a renewal of the contract that they use each year and an upgrade to add additional users. So in order to not hamstring the legal department any more than we have to, I would like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Objection. Overruled.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Item 16 is the Reserve Department Reports, Committees and Boards. I believe we have some this afternoon. I was going to say morning. We are in the afternoon.
Well into it, yeah.
Recognize Derek Mumert with our EMA.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Back, Council Mayor, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chuck Berry. He's here with, from the EPA to give you guys some information.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Berry.
Thank you very much. Again, my name's Chuck Berry. I'm a federal on-scene coordinator from the US EPA's Emergency Response Branch in Atlanta. There is a facility here on the north side of town on Plainview Avenue, I think in District 3, called Tetrix. It's an electroplating facility. Tetrix has been operating in that location since about 1990. And they've had a, a, a long history of regulatory interaction with both ADM and the EPA, culminating in an order by my agency a few years ago, trying to bring them back into regulatory compliance. They were making incremental gains in improving the facility, but the owner died earlier this year. And consequently, no one is completing those. But also, the facility needs to be shut down. It just needs to go through a closure action. And the owner's estate has said that they cannot do that. And so it falls to my agency to affect that closure activity. There is a considerable amount of material stored in the building right now. We estimate probably somewhere around 100,000 gallons of waste, nearly 30,000 of which is likely cyanide-containing. We came back in August and did some stabilizing of tanks. We were out there in July and collected samples, but we noted there were some problems with some of the tanks. We came back and stabilized them. And right now, everything in the facility is stabilized. My agency intends to return in a few weeks and begin a removal action to get rid of the waste and get it out of the community. For right now, we have affected security at the building. Our biggest risk right now is that something happens inside the facility and changes those containers to unstable. We're really worried about trespass inside the building. Fire remains our Fire remains our greatest fear. I've worked with EMA to let them know what's out there, and Chief over here, Fire Department, they've come up with a plan, and they can speak directly to what their response plan is, but EPA is ready to support that plan if something were to happen. It is a low, low-risk level. I want to stress that very much. The facility is stable, but from our industry to not recognize that those risks do exist, however close to zero they are, would be irresponsible of us. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that it's not probable, but it certainly is possible, that something happens before we get back out there and start our removal action. For right now, the community doesn't need to do anything other than be aware that this situation exists, and as the city can talk about their plan, just be aware that they may have to, at some future date, be involved in something. So are there any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mayor Ford.
So we're going to issue a press release on this. We want to thank Chuck. We were made aware of this information this week, and so we are following protocol. We have a system in place from the mayor's office down to Ruth Moffett, to our director of EMA, to our police chief, to our fire chief, and we have something in place there. Putting a extra-secure fence around the facility, video surveillance with AI that'll notify our police department, Fire Department, EMA. We're very aware of the danger, but also very aware of the precautions that y'all have taken place. We want to thank you for that. He will be reporting back to the council every 30 days, a report. The projected time would hopefully be sometime by the end of January and to have it cleaned up, but we want the people to know in this community that we are observing it, we're hawking it, and I'm on top of it.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. All right. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads, any other reports? All right, if not, we'll move to item 17, citizen requests. We have three today. First is Janie Browning from the Gaston City Board of Education, going to talk about Family Literacy Night event. Hi there.
If anyone knows Janie, I'm not Janie. I'm Hannah Gray. I'm the Children's Services Manager at Gaston Public Library, so we partnered with Gaston City Schools for a Family Literacy Night. I'm excited to share with you about that upcoming night. That will be Thursday, September the 19th, from 5:30 to 7:00. This is a come-and-go event with over 15 community resources. Sheriff Horton will be reading a story, and the Children's Department at 6:00 PM. We'll also have some really cool equipment for the kids to see from the Sheriff's Department, as well as the Police and Fire Department. Last year, we signed over 100 families up for library cards. Every September is National Library Card Sign-Up Month, so we're hoping 101 this year, a little bit more. We'll have a little over 400 in attendance, and we just hope to see everyone there. So I've got some flyers that I'm going to pass out, and we just hope that everyone comes. It's going to be a really good event. I've got some special things planned. If anyone is a Star Wars fan, I do have a stormtrooper from the 501st coming, hopefully Darth Vader as well.
John Moore is.
Something, John Moore. And so we've got some kind of, some special guests coming and some things like that. So we'll have the cafe open as well. So if everybody isn't aware, we do have a beautiful rainbow cafe inside the library that is ran by Gaston City staff and their students that may need a little more special assistance than other students. Also, their food is phenomenal, so I'll pass out flyers, and we hope that everyone can be there. Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
She does a good job.
Well, thank you very much. We look forward to that. That's, I think you did that last year, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We did that last year. Glenn Ford was there with Gaston State's table, so we'll have Gaston State again. The Wendy Van Hooten Teaching Garden will be there. There is a lady that's going to come and teach pottery. We've got crafts. We've got the YMCA coming to teach about some water safety with some fun activities. So it's a really big event, and we're really proud to partner with Gaston City Schools for that. So something really, really special that we can offer the community, as well as just the kids at Gaston City Schools, that, you know, they might see something they're interested in, they might want to grow up and be a fireman, they might want to join the Sheriff's Department. Just something a little different for everybody to come out and see. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and then next on our list is, and I see we have our friend from the back, and please forgive me, I'm, yeah, Mr. Tobias from the Board of Education. Thank you for being here. You've been here the whole time. Would you care to offer anything to the?
I would.
All right.
I'd like everyone to come out.
Well, thank you for being here, Mr. Tobias. Thank you so much. All right, next on our list to speak is Alicia Veal. And Ms. Veal, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, oh, is that Ms. Veal?
Yes.
All right. And Ms. Veal has contacted the clerk's office and has asked to speak on drainage issue, and I believe it's in the area where we talked about this morning, right?
Adam Circle.
Adam Circle, I believe. That's right.
Yes.
Might want to pull that mic down just a little bit. There you go. Thank you.
Well, my name is Alicia Veal, and I live at Adam Circle. I was, had a complaint about the drainage issue, but he came out to the home, and he showed us what they were going to do, the new plan and everything, so I had no problem with it. So we're good on that.
Well, thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know.
Ms. Veal, thank you for your patience. This is, we've talked about this. Some of these projects take a long time, and there's so much to do, it just takes a long time. It's not that anybody's dragging their feet, as you probably know, but thank you for being patient with us as we.
He didn't have to come out, but he came out and he looked at everything.
Wonderful.
And I appreciate him coming out and taking care of it.
We look forward to getting it corrected.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, and we also had a request to speak. The last one is Kristy Roden, asked to speak about drainage.
She's her neighbor, same neighbor.
She's your neighbor, right?
She's my neighbor, and so I told her I would come and speak for both of us, and we're fine with it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. All right, that brings us to remarks by Mayor and Council. I know, Mayor, we have had a long day.
I want to go quick.
Lot going on, but.
I'll have to leave after I talk. You imagine, we got a lot going on. But I want to thank the council and the Leah thing we had yesterday. I think it was yesterday, but wasn't it yesterday?
Yeah, yesterday.
We joined forces with them. It's a good consortium. Thursday night, we're just playing this in between the meetings, and Councilman Avery and Councilman Back, I hope y'all can be there, Thursday at 5:30 PM at Carver Community Center. Well, I've asked the EPA to be there. I've been texting while I've been sitting over here. That will not be the first and only meeting. It'll be the first meeting. But we will be having a meeting Thursday night at 5:30 at Carver. The 9/11 Memorial Stairclimb, please do not forget about that. The proceeds go to Toys for Santa for the Fire Department, and I hope to see everybody there, whether you're walking or not. We need all the volunteers. We're taking applications for the youth council until Friday, that we passed last week. We, I'm going to just wait and discuss the fire on West Meagan. It happened last night, and all the participants involved, Councilman Woman Monatred, but it was a great thing. The 9/11 ceremony is tomorrow at 5:30 at the courthouse on Fourth and Broad, hosted by Gaston Beautification Board. And the Fire Department will read its keynote speaker. Thank you, Mr. President.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham?
I have no remarks.
No remarks this afternoon? Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to thank the mayor, the mayor's staff, the council, all the department heads. Really want to give a shout-out to our first responders, Chief Reed, Chief Jaggers. I just want to tell you both, thank you for all that you do, especially in light of all we see in larger cities, and some of that stuff going in smaller cities, too. But our citizens feel safe, and, you know, when our people have traffic stops, how you guys conduct all of that, and people make it home safe. We know we have issues like everybody else, but just sitting here thinking about all that, I just want to give you both a shout-out and tell you, we appreciate you working on the staff a lot of times as well. And with the addition of former Sheriff Entrick, and we just appreciate that all that's going on in our city to help keep our citizens safe. So thank you for all that you do. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, a few announcements here. Want to give a big shout-out to Gaston City High School Football Team, all of those that played a part in it, band, cheerleaders, booster clubs, all of those participant, coaches, coach staff, for a good area win. And I think the next game is an away, I'm sorry, McAdory, which is a way game, right? Way game, and so it is a regional area game also, I believe, and then following that would be homecoming. So if we can travel to support, again, to dito off of Councilman Smith with the appreciation of all of the services. Definitely want to thank those school resource officers with the lute of what's going on in our states all around us, our neighboring states and cities, but want to definitely thank those officers, make sure that our students get to and from those games, parents and those that follow along also. Edgewall County Marching Band Expo is today, also at 6:30 PM at Gaston City High School Stadium. So for those music lovers like myself, go out and check out that expo. A lot of great activities that'll go on, on those grounds today at our Gaston City High School. Want to give condolences to the Rogers family. Jessie Rogers, who was secretary to our former mayor, Steve Means, has passed. And so for those that know her, our condolences go out to that family. Her service is here at the city of Gaston, and just continue his prayer to that family. Another continuous prayer and condolences goes out to Lonzie Ann Vernia Gray Ray. Both twins have passed now. Mr. Lonzie passed on last month, and then Vernia passed on yesterday. And so want to extend a continuous prayer to that family as they go through. These brother and sisters was 102 years old. They was our oldest living twins in the state of Alabama. And, you know, it's just, it's a sad occasion, but yet a long-lived, and I can imagine, great life. So as they now fellowship back together amongst the glorious guys, we're praying for the family in their, in their loss. And to end, as it relates to the news release, please disagree, pay attention to the news release, pay attention to the information that we'll be giving out as your concerns of the matter, and let's make sure that we also spread the word to come out on Thursday, this Thursday, 5:30 PM at the Carver Community Center, to receive the information that is necessary for you to receive as it relates to Tetrix there in our community, but also for you to be able to ask the questions that you may have, to get educated on the concern as it relates to our community, and that we will be properly informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have any comments.
No comments from District Five? Councilwoman Monatred?
No comments.
No comments from Six? Go ahead, Councilman Wilson.
I just want to thank Brendan Phillips and everybody that worked on this budget that we just passed. You know, we had, they did get with each council member individually, and we did have a meeting and discuss it and go over it, and if we had any questions, they were answered, and they were, you know, answered quickly, and I just appreciate all that hard work from everybody that did that.
All right. Clarification, we'll vote on that next week. That's okay.
And we'll vote on that next week.
This first reading was today, but I concur. That's been a lot of work done into the budget. I want to thank our Finance Department, Mayor's Administration team for work on that. That's the largest budget, I believe, in the city's history, I believe, if I'm right. That's 74 million-plus dollars, so it's exciting. Revenues are up, expenses are down. Things are headed in a really good direction in the city of Gaston. Y'all, we have gone over quite a bit today. We do have a nuisance and abatement hearing at 1:30, and it's 1:28 and a half. So we're going to have to, we're going to, is it okay if we all stay right here? Does anybody need a, like a safety meeting? We will have a safety meeting for about five minutes, and we will come back here and have the nuisance and abatement hearing. We are adjourned.
Perfect. Do we have an agenda?